Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. For you said, Father, that this is a day that you have made and we ought to be happy and glad in it. And so, Father, we are happy and we are glad. And Father, I thank you, Lord, for the invitation to come here tonight, God, and just to pray, God, and ask you, God, for peace, God, peace in this meeting and peace in the city of Easely, Father. And I thank you, Lord, for your angels on assignment, God, in this city, God. And Father, we thank you that you are going to do great and mighty things in this city of Easely, God. And Lord, I pray mostly for the Spirit of unity, because, God, the Bible declares that where there is unity, you will command the blessing to come. So, Father, I thank you for this meeting tonight. I thank you for all of the things on the agenda will be done, God, in decent and in order, Father. And we pray these things in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam four is approval of minutes. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, they stand as written. Report from council members. Ward one.
No report. I did want to say a late Happy Easter to everyone and their families. And I will turn it over to Kristin to give a quick update on our spring fling that was canceled and the farmer's market coming up.
So, April 1st was supposed to be our spring fling. We ended up having to cancel due to, ready to have wind and rain that occurred that day. We were very thankful we did for our vendors, for our council day. We are looking to start our farmer's market May 13th. He and I, who is our event coordinator for the city, has a lot of the same fans that were going to plan at spring fling, some same vendors, it's the same kids area coming up. You'll see it with that. Start advertising here in the next few weeks, but May 13th is the start of our farmer's market. It'll run through every Saturday.
And ward two.
Yes, I do hope that everybody did have a very happy and blessed Easter. I am presenting tonight to the clerk for the offices of mayor, a list of items and responses that I have not received yet. Again, I've reworded it since the email that I received said they did not have to answer any questions. So, for the record, I'm asking to identify the department that is responsible for reconciling the COE, City of Easely, bank statements during the period of November 21 through January 23, 23, that were not reconciled in a timely manner, to identify the entity responsible for reconciling the bank statement and list the department code used for the monthly lease payment of the mayor's 2022 Tahoe. What I brought tonight is in this month's packet, I had the finance report. And the finance report for this month, for the month of March, is eight pages long. Well, in January and February, they were 12 pages long. And in December, they were 15, it was 15 pages long. And in November, it was 27 pages long. And so, I did not understand why we do not see the individual department codes for 11, 414, 421, 415, and so on in this. I mean, if our budget is shrinking, this is going to be a fast budget session for all these pages to, you know, be cut down to a third. So, this memo is being submitted as a FOIA in addition to my 61st request. That's why I do not have access to the accounting script.
Well, I wanted to thank all of the people who came out today to help our Ms. Easely and attended the golf tournament so that we could help to support her in her attempt to be Ms. South Carolina. We had quite a number of teams. We had a full slate of activities. We had a lot of good fellowship and good food.
Ward five.
I have no question.
Ward six.
Well, Mac, I'm glad that Sam Norris is here with us this evening. Glad that he's well enough to be with us.
All right, now, we're at the point to citizens wishing to address city council. And I think Jennifer has the book. And just remember, you have three minutes. And there'll be a gentleman, I think, that's going to be taking care of you three minutes. Okay, Jennifer?
Okay, Lewis.
All right, the three minutes starts after I say "why I'm here," right? Okay, just making sure. All right, so, good evening to Mayor Womack and city council members. As was introduced, I am Ivanna Shepherd Lewis. Lewis and I am here representing my parents, Lewis and Shirley Shepherd, on the ongoing water runoff issue on their property located at the corner of Robinall and Forest Drives. This afternoon, I sent council members and mayor an email. I probably have not had, you probably have not had time to read it, but please look at it. And if you don't want to read it, please look at the video that's included in it and you'll understand what the issue is. So, instead of just explaining all the issues, this is the sweet, short, sweet version of it. Imagine that you are a residential property owner in the city limits of Easely. It's a far stretch, I know. And that you've been a property owner for more than 50 years. Nearly two years ago, your friendly neighbor has a water runoff issue. He calls the city for assistance. The city fixes your friendly neighbor's issue, but now all the water goes onto your vacant but buildable property. The good folks of the city mail you a letter asking permission to clean out what appears to be a drainage easement that goes partly across your property. Being a good neighbor and a good citizen of the city that you love, you agree to allow the work to take place with the understanding that you will be able to easily maintain the drainage easement. Work begins. There's no such thing as easy about the easement. It is a ditch, flat-out ditch. Now, the water runs straight across your property. During the process of digging, the ditch a hole, the ditch, a hole's left under the fence for your dog to escape, and your mother's transplanted fig tree has been cut back significantly to the point it will not survive. You call the city, who says they will come back to fix it. But wait, they can't because the funds are frozen. While waiting, your children do a little research and you find out that the newly added ditch across your buildable property is not supposed to be there in the first place. It's supposed to be along the property line, not across the property. You spend the next nine months trying to get the city to correct the issue that they created. In the meantime, a nice new house goes up across the street, which makes your older house look a little tired and dated, dated, but you decide to spiff it up. But you can't because you still have a river that runs across the backyard and you don't want to do anything to end up going to get washed away. Every phone call or meeting with the city, you hold, you're told that it's going to be on the agenda for whatever the next meeting is, that it's going to be an expensive repair, and they're waiting for whatever funds to come in. Seasons are clicking by and the ditch is still there. Can you imagine all this? If this were your property, your investment, how would you want the situation to be handled? We've been patient and understanding. If you know my father, which I know many of you do, you know Job himself, we've been patient, but enough is enough. Phone calls, emails, and meetings have gotten our family nowhere. I'm asking the city to do the right thing and please properly repair the mess that the city created on my parents' property.
Thank you for letting me come to address this council day. I'm here representing at Foothills Playhouse. We are having a benefit concert on February 7th at 3:00. Derek, our artistic director, who directs music at church, will have a worship-type celebration in the theater. It's going to be $10 a ticket. It's a fundraiser to help us buy a new sign for in front of the theater and improve our lighting inside the theater. Just one thing I want to say is, we have done 12 shows, performances this year so far. Out of the 12 performances, nine of them have been sold out audiences and three of them at 75% capacity. We are having parking issues between the silos, car center, and the parking lot. You try to park three major events in that parking lot at a time, it's hard to do. But we are getting them as far as way as Asheville, Hendersonville, and Wahaala are coming to see shows at our playhouse. We're bringing people in from other areas of the community and that, other areas to the city of Easely. So, we are a, now, I think we're, really are enjoying the works and everything else. And thanks, city, for what's going on at the repairs at the theater right now.
Clover Vaughn.
I've lived at 601 East Second Avenue for 40-plus years, and I raised my family there. I'm asking that you accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the rezoning request for the corner of South E and Grigsby Avenue. My concern is the eating away at Easely's core, the city residencies, and destroying the neighborhoods with long histories here. With all of the recent apartments allowed at the old Gettys Middle School and those on Burns Avenue across from the library, the city's infrastructure is already impacted here. When all of these units are at full capacity, the cost to the city will escalate due to the extra usage of the sewer, the water, the traffic, and the extra policing that's going to be needed. As local taxpayers and residents, we have been, we will be burdened with this extra load. Once a property is allowed to change from single-family, then in the future, as I understand it, anything can be built, not just what is now being requested. I agree, this property needs some more cleaning up. It was once a nice house with a pretty yard. Mr. Amet, who has the property, doesn't live at that address, and he doesn't plan to. He has no, no interest in that property other than he accepted it upon his father's death. He has mentioned seeking funds for his plans. That sends up red flags for what may actually be the future for that place. There's always going to be change, but at the time, at this particular time, you all hold the quality of Easely's future in your hands. Please don't discount the value of home-owning residents in the heart of the city and vote no on this request for the rezoning. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Letha Parker, and my husband and I live on the corner of Stewart Drive and the four-way stop signs. I'm here to represent the residents of Stewart Drive and Burns Avenue regarding the rezoning of property at the corner of Southeast Street and Grigsby Avenue, known as 501 Southeast Street. Stewart Drive runs parallel to South E. I spoke at the planning commission on March 20th, and after several speakers, the commission voted unanimously to oppose the rezoning of this property on Southeast Street. The young man who owns this property gave a nice presentation about how he will put townhomes on the property. However, we all know, and we know from experience on Stewart Drive and Burns Avenue, that once it's rezoned, he can do what he wishes with the property, even build apartments instead of townhouses. And there is no guarantee. This is exactly what happened to the residents of Stewart Drive and Burns Avenue. The late Mr. Jim Gregory had four acres of land facing Burns Avenue with a for-sale sign and a sign with a depiction of four nice Charleston-looking townhomes, and he needed the property to be rezoned. We took him by his word because we had fought him one time because he wanted to put Publix where the public library is today. We fought that and we won that with the rezoning. But this time, we didn't fight Mr. Gregory because he gave us his word he was going to build those townhouses. Well, the property was rezoned, we didn't fight it, and now there are 60 units of apartments known as Creekside Apartments. So, again, once property is rezoned, the owner can do what he would like to with his property. And I say that to say this, that within a half-mile radius from the corner of Stewart Drive, the four-way stops, we have 224 units called the Farmhouse facing Stewart Drive. We have 60 units named the Creekside Apartments on Burns Avenue, which are not filled yet. We have 32 units called Charlestown Apartments on Stewart Drive, part of which almost backs up to the property in question tonight. And 40 units known as East Terrace Apartments that back up to the new Creekside Apartments on Burns Avenue. That's 356 apartments within that half-mile radius. Part of Grigsby Avenue even has Woodlawn Apartments behind it that has 20 units that I didn't even count in the 356. So, how do you think all these folks, along with the regular and residents, get to 123? Most take Stewart Drive, okay? As would the new residents of the townhouses or the residents of the apartments deciding on what he decides to build if you rezonate. You can count two cars per unit. That's a lot of traffic. Now, I know Stewart Drive is a state road. The Honorable Mayor has reminded my husband of that many, many times. It's a state road. He can't do anything about it. But I'll tell you something, Burns Avenue, Southeast Street, Grigsby Avenue, and Bowen Avenue are not. They are city streets, and traffic is only going to get worse, not only for those residents on Grigsby and Southeast, but all of us on Stewart Drive as well. My unscientific study, and I say unscientific study, was that I went outside, and I went in a measure of two weeks, I went at certain times of the day, morning, midday, and evening. And when I did that, is my time up?
Thank you for hearing me. I have two questions. I have read through the zoning ordinances for the city multiple times and have concerns about a property near me, but these are general questions. The first is, why is there no zoning designation for the city of Easely that provides for the preservation of natural areas? Why are all the zoning designations only for the development of land? Because in your zoning ordinance, in the very first section, where it talks about the purpose of zoning, number 25 states to provide for the protection and preservation of agriculture, forests, and other environmentally sensitive lands, thereby preserving the cultural and natural heritage of the city of Easely. Much later in this document, this 120-some-page document about zoning ordinances, there's a declaration that there shall be no clearcutting of forested areas in preparation for the development of land and that we are to seek other means of preparing property for that than the clearcutting, which is what I'm seeing all over the city right now. And I think which is what some of the other folks have spoken about also. My second question is, most of the through-town roads in this, in our little town, our happy little town, are not city-controlled. However, the majority are two-lane roads. Why are you planning more and more multi-residential GR2 zones, zoned properties, when our roads are already overloaded and are becoming more and more dangerous? This is also a question which is addressed in the zoning ordinance. Right on the first page, number five, says that the purpose of your guidelines are to ensure safe and convenient traffic control and movement, including a reduction or prevention of congestion of public streets, convenience of access, multiple modes of transportation, and an interconnected and well-planned, planned street system. I would ask you to consider your own document in granting some of these zoning changes that you have been doing recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Okay, as a concerned citizen of the Sheriff Mill Highway 8 area of Easely, I do not want any more houses added to any part of Pickens County. We need a moratorium, just like the county, to prepare the infrastructure for future growth. And I think that would be a good idea if you could at least propose it. People all over Easely are very angry that you do not listen to us when you were elected to promote our safety and public health. What about your oath? Many people in this area are concerned that laws and regulations are not being followed. You are bending or outright ignoring these regulations to cram as many houses as you can get into each development. We want transparency and participation in the way the elected officials of the city of Easely are conducting business. The public has a right to know where their tax money goes. And Robinson, you're a lawyer. Is it not a conflict of interest for you to be working with the builder when you're, you were elected to protect people? Is that not a conflict of interest? Thank you.
Dawn Hurst.
I hope everyone had a great Easter, as I did. I want just to go over a few things. It's kind of a little bit repetitive of what someone else has said, but I would still like to address it. I did see on the agenda tonight that a petition was filed to revisit a piece of property in the city limits where you want to rezonate. And this person particularly filed a petition for the rezonate. So, why can't the petition from Sheriff Mill Road that we've asked for the annexation to be considered, just as this petition for the rezoning was considered? I would ask that the members really visit the almost 2,000 people that have signed this petition off of Sheriff Mill Road and for the annexation, to remember that these people are citizens of Easely County. They might not necessarily be in the city, but they are in Pickens County, and we would like you to consider their voice when you're deciding on the annexation. However, when you do drive around town to all the different subdivisions and new facilities that you guys are developing, I've noticed several things about ordinances that are being violated. And I'm just wondering, do, does the city council in Easely, since I live in Pickens County, I don't really understand how you guys work, but who operates under when a zoning or building ordinance is violated? Is this what you guys do, or is there a building official that we must contact when these ordinances are violated? I noticed that if it's 50-plus houses, there should be two entrances. Well, we're not seeing that anywhere across the city. If there is 80-plus houses, there must be a left-turning lane, according to the South Carolina DOT. Well, I didn't see that off the Lenhart Grove subdivision that you guys built off of Lenhart Road. So, how can you say that your ordinances are better than the county ordinance when you're not even basically using them? You keep repeatedly telling us your ordinances are better than the county ordinance. All we're asking off of Sheriff Mill Road is that you consider the fact that if this subdivision is going to be built, then let it be built in the county, because then we can fight the people that represent us. There are several things that you guys continue to address as we sit here on the various different times. One thing is apparently you guys don't have a city administrator. So, I'm just curious to know, is there a city administrator application that you guys are taking? And if there are, how many applications are being accepted and when will that position be filled? Because of the growth within Easely needs to have a city administrator. I also noticed that the current assistancy administrator may also be the building official. Is that correct? I'm not really sure. If that is so, then how are these ordinances being followed if the building administrator is also the city administrator? So, I'm just curious if we could get these questions answered. And I'll go over several little developments, maybe they're in your ward, but the indigo park, there's no sidewalks. That subdivision is terrible. If you go through there and you drive a car through it, you can barely get through. So, I'm just wondering how a fire truck would get through there.
I would like to yield my spot for this partner to administer.
No, we can't yield.
Don't yield.
Okay. All right. Why? Yeah. Do you want me to just read about yours? Yeah, she was my math teacher in middle school, and she's great with numbers. I love you, but your handwriting is, was going to try. All right, so, my name is Jessica Massey. I'm a resident of the county, but I am an Easely resident as well. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to listen to residents, not to be dismissive or choose who you want to give your full attention to based on whether they agree with you or not. When you hear the same message over and over, it's not time to tune it out. It should move you into a more careful consideration of the topic. It has become incredibly evident that we have a divisive issue before us with annexation. What steps are you taking to listen to and work with concerned citizens to reach a solution? As a piggyback to annexation concerns, many of us have serious concerns about the lack of transparency on city finances. I would like to add my name to the list of citizens who are vocalizing our interest in seeing the already submitted FOIAs answered and made available to the public. I am a proud citizen of Easely. I am a Green Wave alumni. I am a fourth-generation farmer on Lenhart. I care about preserving the character and community and seeing our growth happen in a sustainable manner. I care about working together to reach a solution that each of the issues you've heard tonight, please take seriously the responsibility that you have in shaping our community and the decision-making power you wield.
I didn't mean to miss six, but I missed six.
That's okay. Want to go back up to it?
Yeah. All right.
So, Mayor and council, just to fill you in on our special election. The voting had opened up today at Pickens County Voter Registration Center. So, for the next two weeks, you can go up there and vote for your Ward Four, if you're in Ward Four. The two candidates is Gene Patterson and David Jones. And then, the main election will be the 25th of April. And they will be held at the Five Point Church, Easely Union Baptist Church, and Calvary Hill Baptist Church on that day. So, them three locations will cover all seven precincts of that ward. So, with that, we look forward to the new Ward Four member being voted in, and we'll be prepared to catch him up on the things that needs caught up on. That's all I have, Mayor. That's all I have, Mayor.
You got anything else on that, didn't he? Has anybody else got anything over there? Y'all good? Good? Okay, okay. All right, we'll go to item eight, which is unfinished business. That's, that'll be second readings. A is ordinance 2023-05, to enter into a intergovernmental agreement with the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
So Mayor and Council, again, this is the second reading. Last reading was last month, and it was approved. This is just an agreement with the Municipal Association that we've had for many, many, many years. They've got some name-changing and all that, whatever they do, because they're dealing with different states on collecting fees, and so it's just a few word changes is what it amounts to. But this is so they can continue collecting our broker tax, our telecommunications tax, and insurance tax, as they have been doing for many years. Looking for second reading tonight so we can get the agreement signed and get back to the Municipal Association. I think we've got a deadline sometime in May.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Call for a question.
Call for the question. All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Any opposed? Item nine, it's new business. This is first reading. A is first reading of ordinance 2023-06, to rezone approximately 1.34 acres of real property located at 501 Southeast. E is an Echo Street. Do I hear motion?
Question right to the floor.
Second.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the Planning Commission did hear this on March 20th. Again, this is a zone of R10, which is a single-family residential, to GR2, which is a multifamily residential. It is 1.34 acres located at 501 Southeast. The Planning Commission did deny this request. We're looking for first reading tonight. If it's denied, it is dead, and if it's approved, it will go to a second reading next month.
Okay, do we have some questions?
I just want to bring to Council, Mayor, Mayor Counsel. Can you hear me? I've also heard from citizens from the area of Southeast Street, and also have received emails regarding this particular piece of property, wants to be rezoned. It is residential, and I don't want the same thing to happen as what we have proposed to us for Publix, the Publix area. So my vote will be to say no.
Well, I agree with Ms. Nancy.
That's kind of loud. I don't want to see, at this point, 14 dwelling units per acre allowed on that small piece of property, so I will not be supporting this.
Okay. Any, any other comments, Council?
Now, Mayor, I'm going to side with the zoning commission on this one, and I too would prefer to see it stay single housing, single-family housing. Pardon me.
Mayor Womack, as a general rule, I don't vote against an ordinance on first reading. That is not an indication of how I might vote at second reading, but I feel that way to give all interested parties the opportunity to express their opinion and listen to other opinions and give Council more time to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll call the question.
I've called for a question on this one. All in favor of the rezoning, raise your right hand. All in favor. Item B, first reading ordinance 2023-07, to rezone approximately 1.35 acres of real property located at 109 Brusher Creek Road. Do I hear motion?
Mayor motion to bring to the floor for discussion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, 109 Brusher Creek Road has made a request to rezone 1.35 acres from office institutional to neighborhood commercial. Both of these are a light commercial that just allows different things in it. The Planning Commission did hear this on March 20th, and they did give an approval for it. First reading is tonight. If it passes, it will go to second reading next month.
It's on the floor.
Any comments? Mario on this one?
Mario, can you, I'm sorry to put you on the spike. Can you give us a brief explanation, the transition from OI to neighborhood commercial?
Well, the request is, is so they can have a type of boutique. They're looking for a certain use, and that use was to food supply, but it's also secondary use in that building to have a boutique where they can sell other things, not just beauty products. That is not permitted in the office institution. It was likely targeted, so it's a general commercial. Across the other street is general commercial, but not until, and to Barby's Office Institution decided the best use is to make a commercial, instead of a general commercial, so that they could open up a little shop like that.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll make the comment, because neighborhood commercial and ONI are both considered transitional zoning. And so, looking at a transition from the high intensity over at the Publix area going back to residential, either one would be considered a transitional use. Now, it's not much different in the way of the intensity between the two. I admit, it's going to be hard to get a turn lane in there, but the SCDOT will be the one that decides what turn lane and how the entrances are done. They will not be able to access off of Brusher Creek if SCDOT does not give them that entrance point.
Just move, move back your question, just access point off of that.
They're looking for it to come off of our road?
I am looking for it to come off that. It just will be, oh, do you want to give a permit? Do you need to ask for a permit? But I believe it's approved.
Well, till we find out, we don't know for sure. But there is access, there's road frontage there where access can be achieved. And again, just because someone says they're going to do one thing doesn't mean that that's what's going to happen. We did have a question that was raised about that. If we rezone it to neighborhood commercial, then any of the uses that are permitted under neighborhood commercial will be allowed. So that's one of those issues as well.
Any other comments?
Call for a question.
I've called for the question. All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Item 10, resolutions, resolution 2023-04, to accept a bid for construction, only a section of Brusher Creek Greenway. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. And this is a resolution, so it needs one vote. Okay, let's turn it over.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to turn it over to Crispin and Mario for just a brief overview. Crispin and...
Counsel, what you have in front of you, you have the proposed contractor that we'd want to go for with this project. We did have this open on our website and on Skevo, and we did have interest, and we feel like this contract will do us justice based on the plans that we have and what we want to do for this section. We'll get part of Brusher Creek Greenway from Jacob Red Owens to Pearson Road. You'll see, you have a cost estimate laid out in front of you for, Counsel, when they come out under budget, based off of Counsel's approval for this project, based off this estimate. I have to answer any questions that Mario can answer. This project is one that Mayor did remind us in a work session we started in 2011, so for my department, for Amy Holter, and all of our departments, it's not going to see confirmation.
The, it's going to be a deal certainly through the constant, same contracts that we're building the water mark, the water mark is a crossing of a water. It's quite extensive project, and we felt they were the more appropriate way to build a project also, so that's one of the reasons why the price came out like this when we bought it. It was really a pile of, and that the construction feel less expensive to be, just across the waters.
Do you have any questions for them?
I have a question. The 1.68 million, that's ARPA money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will, for the record, announce, nothing personal, I have nothing against the parkways, but listening to many people that have shown up over the last couple of months, talking about stormwater problems, the drain off, the runoff, the damage that's been done to property, ARPA money was intended to repair and to support infrastructure, and as much as I think if we were just living in just a fantastic financial time, I would be 100% behind you. But with knowing and hearing from the people that communicate with many through different sources, by speaking out here, I believe that those funds should be used for infrastructure.
And I do appreciate that, I can see that. I do encourage the thought process behind this, just of the thought, alternative transportation. So, you know, we talk about roadways, talk about impact, this is just, my ultimate goal is to connect whatever single park was really. Now, I have 20 more, one more year's for retirement, so I have a long time to make that go happen, but it's an alternative form of transportation. So I, everybody has, you know, I'm going to fight for, you know, our park plan and our master plan for our recreation department. It's the number one thing that citizens in Easely will want from the recreation side is true, so I'm just, from my standpoint, from our understanding, we're just trying to make that happen, but I do appreciate that.
No, and I certainly respect your opinion, and you have a very big job, and that's going to make it bigger, but I know, but I know you can do it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could speak, as Crispin mentioned, this is a longstanding project. I've been around to see, see it from the beginning and frustrated at some of the stops that we've had to endure over the years, but it is near and dear to my heart, and I'm very excited to see this progress. I will make note that, I think someone mentioned it, but this, these funds have been allocated in our budget from last year. And to Ms. Davidson's point, I would like to see some of our future ARPA money that we still need to designate go toward infrastructure and stormwater as well, but I am happy to see this, so hooray. Thank you for all your hard work.
Any other comments, suggestions, questions?
Call for a question.
Call for the question. All in favor of this resolution, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Do we have a motion to adjourn?